With a sigh of relief with uh the Nevada legislature not taking up SB five oh nine. Uh last night as legislative session ended. Um it is in recess, but uh Nevada Governor Joe Lombardo uh has called now two special sessions. One is to do the uh capital improvement project uh that they they wanna do there. Um and so that's one thing. And then tomorrow, of course, he's pushing for them to do something. Uh inevitably vote to pass uh A's funding. Stadium in Las Vegas and um. Uh we we. We knew that they're gonna keep going and going and going. Thing is, is there's no limit on these special sessions. And the legislature can kick it back and they can push it back through and that's just the inevitability of it. Unless they work it a new way and it's something that they can agree to. Um or if they can get some of these other concessions that they made uh to pass, then. We'll see, but the reality is, is they're going to push and push and push and push and push and push. Until there is no more pushing to be done. They either say, come on in, here's some cash, or they say uh. That there's, there's no deal to be done. So the vote goes two ways again, yes and no. In the event that they say no, they could go back and rewrite it and start all over again. And put it right back through in another special session. They can keep doing this. Um, nothing says they can't, and most likely they will until um. Basically, the government or the legislature in this case gets pissed off and says no. And just pushes anything away that comes across the table. Um, you know, I was not expecting them to come crawling back to Oakland at all. They won't, um, at least not yet. Um, the reality is they have a tight deadline. They have give or take six months to push this across and get a deal done somewhere, anywhere. But uh before they lose their revenue sharing. Well, if they lose the revenue sharing, that's that's free money they just don't get. And uh you know them, they want that free money. These are guys who only spend what little they have from TV and and other uh sponsorships and arrangements. Um, you know, that extra twenty or fifteen, or I don't remember what the the number is off the top of my head. A million dollars that they get uh helps keep them uh for what it's worth in the black. Um, I do believe they're probably operating in the red uh once you take in. All the money that they actually do uh spend when it comes to trying to get this ballpark. They've they've had to spend tens of millions of dollars to move this thing that quickly. That's just, things just don't move that fast. Um, so. I say this because everybody's saying, hey, what about Portland or what about Nashville or whatever? The A's have been working on Nevada for two years. Um, and you saw what happened with a rushed piece of legislation. Uh unless some guy is coming out of pocket and saying, hey, come over here. Uh, I don't see Sacramento or Portland or any of these places ready to give up money publicly. You know, public money like they 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 want in Las Vegas. I don't see it happening. I don't think they have the thirst for it. Um, and certainly not on such a tight deadline. I mean, uh Nashville would seem like the most likely place because um Dave Stewart has been. Um, working that area uh for his own wants for expansion. Um. But. Yeah, that's a tough one, um but I just don't see anything happening in such a short period of time. I mean, and does MLB wanna give him an extension? Or do they wanna give him a pass? I'm like, couldn't get it done in Oakland, couldn't get it, couldn't get it done in Nevada. I don't know why you would wanna give him another shot somewhere else unless you you didn't. Unless there were no questions about it, like these people are well moneyed and uh we're not looking for a legislative's. Uh, a solution, there's just a guy with some cash and maybe he wants a piece of the team. I I don't know. I don't see it happening like that. So the way I I'm looking at it is they're just gonna keep pushing this through over and over again, over and over again. They're gonna, they're gonna pound the plate uh as in baseball parlance. They're they're gonna keep throwing it right there in the strike zone. And eventually you're either gonna strike out or you're gonna hit a homerun or something. You're gonna get some result. Um, that result that they're looking for, of course, is. A yes, some road to yes. And the. The only way this this goes away really is if they say yes, because okay, here, here's your yes. This is it. I don't see them coming back for more, but if I see them say no, rewrite it, reintroduce it. Rewrite it, reintroduce it until they run out of time or until somebody gets pissed and says no. I mean, that's again, that's the only way it really goes down. Again, the only way it goes back to Oakland is some major breakthrough in concession, probably by Oakland. Um, and uh a major failure in Las Vegas. Again, this goes down tomorrow. Um, I don't know what can happen. They can stall and 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 not do anything or. Uh voted out of committee or it dies in committee. I don't know, but I whatever happens. Um, I don't think they say uh, I don't think they're gonna take no for an answer. And um, that's hard right now because, you know, uh we have so few victories in Oakland. Uh figuratively and literally, this team is terrible. Um, they did win today. Um, so that was, that was nice, uh but I am so disconnected from what is on the field. Um, but uh I I have no idea what's going on. I I don't know who half the players are, guys get called up, sent down, and I have no idea who's doing what anymore. The product on the field is abysmal. Uh, I keep getting emails about, hey, vote for this guy for for All-Star game, vote for your favorite player. I'm like, I don't, I don't have one. None of them deserve it. And I'm, I just, I don't have the the taste for it. I'm so out of what's happening in baseball when everything is devoted to just one subject. Uh, it's been said for the last, you know, few months, he's like, the only, the only win that would come out of this season is if they. They finally agree to something in Oakland and I don't know if Oakland has the will to do this. Um, you know, Sheng Tao was on a, uh she's done a couple of interviews and saying, hey, yeah, she would talk to them if they called. Why aren't you calling them? Call them, see what they say. Hey, what do you guys got going on? You guys wanna come back to the table? Hey, uh, you know, can we downsize this project so we don't need uh so many um hurdles to jump over? Hey, can we just do a stadium and uh we'll we'll do the other development later? Hey, if we only do a stadium, you don't have to deal about, you know, we don't have to worry about low income housing. If we only do a stadium, uh, we don't have to worry about ancillary development. We can, we can just focus on this small bit of money. You know, you definitely get a discount, uh actually, speaking of discount, uh Rebecca Kaplan, he uh messaged me this morning. And she was like, you know, he, he already gets like an automatic five hundred million dollar discount just by building in the Bay Area. Uh, because he doesn't need a dome. I mean, you might get a couple of rainouts every year, but. Minor. It's never too hot or too too cold. Um, yeah, that's where we're at. Um, it's a terrible place to be. Um, you know, everybody says this is a, just some thing to build up value and sell and. Like so to here, so to there, it doesn't matter. Um, it start, it's really wearing down on me and a lot of other folks. Uh, you know, we we put a lot into this team and uh it it sucks to go this point, you know, and. Various people involved, uh whether it was Libby Shaft or Gene Kwan or the current mayor. I feel like they're just not doing enough. And when I say not doing enough, I'm not saying you have to. Bet the farm here. You don't have to give away everything. That, that's absurd. You know, it's, you do have to be reasonable and I don't feel like Oakland's been really reasonable. Asking thirty percent for something that really only has like a fifteen, twenty percent legal rate of uh. Uh, um, low income housing asked above that seems a little absurd. You can ask, but that seems to have stalled there with the negotiations. All of these community benefits seem large um and and exorbitant, exorbitant anyways. Uh, a lot, there's a lot. Um. Yeah, it's, it's, it, it makes me not want, if if you put all these fees and taxes and surcharges on me, I I don't, I wouldn't wanna do that business. But um, that's the thing with Oakland and economic development. Um, that Heron guy Trash Knight, Heron, I don't even know what his name is. Like, he was bagging on the the six Oakland sixty eights and Last Dive Bar, who. Honestly, actually, before I even saw that this morning, I kinda gave him props because uh these are two groups. Who've done more to promote the A's. Um, and help the community than the A's have. You know, uh Last Dive Bar makes like t-shirts and pins and stuff and um they're all very Oakland centric. Uh specifically the A's. Uh, and then they take the money and they uh donate, donate it to the Athletics Community Fund. That's awesome. Uh, then you have the sixty eights, uh they're the guys mainly in the Wrightville bleachers uh who. Besides uh making all these t-shirts and uh setting up tickets for the June thirteenth thing, they do a lot of community outreach and so on and. Uh, anyways, this guy was bagging on them because they didn't give their money to something else and. Said, hey, why don't you guys take this money and use it for the community? And they're like, yeah, we are. I mean, I think, I think that's pretty fucked up, honestly. Uh, that guy's kind of a jerk. Uh, but I understand where he's going, but where I was going with this was that he doesn't understand that you. Certain things have to happen for you to have money for social programs. You know, you, they just don't happen. They just aren't, you know, it's, it's not magic money. You know, the fed, they get, you know, Oakland gets federal money and they get state money and they get special grants that, you know. It's not free. You have to work for them. You have to apply for them. Um, it has to happen somewhere, but you can't. Some of these things are one time only. They don't come from, you know, they're not, you know, a weekly paycheck. They're, they're, the way that you develop. Property uh uh or, well, taxes in general is by building business and 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 they exchange your property. Um, you know, if uh if your grandma bought a house in the, in the, in the sixties for fifteen thousand dollars. She can only imagine what her, her current tax rate is. Maybe she might be paying three or four hundred dollars a year. That's not that much. Um, maybe it's three or four thousand, but still not a lot of money. Um, you need that house to sell. And, you know, so the house sells, now the current market value isn't fifteen thousand dollars. It's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars and suddenly um that's many thousands of dollars. That the city would have at its disposal. And so there is kind of a, you know, a thing that has to happen where, you know, that that property does need to get transferred or sold. Or however it works, you know, uh in very specific instances, uh are you able to get away with not paying those extra taxes? Whether your uh home is wrapped up in some sort of corporate structure or uh a uh. A trust or something, you know, that's really the only way and most people don't do it that way. Most people don't even have a will. They just die and their kid, their, their kids take it over, goes to probate. But whatever happens, that house is reassessed at a higher, much higher property tax value. Um, and, you know, that is where your general fund gets a lot of its money. And then um sales taxes, whoa, those only come from selling stuff, selling stuff legitimately. So, you know, I deal in 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 certain things and I have to have special licenses. Um, I have to report to the franchise tax board. I have to spend, you know, when I buy supplies and stuff, you know. I have to uh, you know, promise that I'm not using it for myself in that I'm going to charge sales tax. And that sales tax is gonna go to the state and the state's gonna divvy that up in one way or in another. Um, but those are the ways it happens, you know, hotel taxes, um. Uh, special, there's, there's all kinds of taxes. They're everywhere, you know, beyond your income tax, beyond your Medicare and your Medicaid. Beyond your social security, you're getting taxed a lot and that's how all this stuff happens. And people who don't have as much income can't spend that income and generate tax money. People who can't run a business uh aren't gonna sell things and aren't going to generate those taxes. Um, you know, you need entrepreneurial uh enterprise. You need business. You need people to move and flow through the, the. Community because that's just gonna grow things and when. I'm hearing there's no special session as far as the A's proposal. No, Lombardo called for two special sessions, one tonight at eight o'clock for the CIP. And then tomorrow specifically for the A's project. Um, so, uh unless something changed again, I don't know, but that's what the word is. Uh, and we'll see, um, again, I don't know what happens after that. Uh, but it seems likely this is going back to another special session. Then another, and then another, then another. Um, yeah, like this is like stuff that's happened like within the last hour or two. Um, it's uh, it's just going to some, by the way, I'm at the uh, what is this place called? The Valley Fair Mall in San Jose, uh I'm doing some work down here and uh. It's really interesting. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move this to a different direction. Uh, the mall is not dead. You know, um, in the Bay Area, you know, if I go into like East Bay, Hilltop Mall's gone. Uh, Southland Mall's on its almost, it's on its last leg. Yeah, Santana Road, man, that place is jumping. I go into the mall here and I don't wanna go in because uh uh security doesn't like when I. They get mad that I take photos inside, but that's my job. Um, the uh. The whole place is like, it's, it's, there's thousands of people. I can't find anywhere to park. This is the, this is the free parking lot. It's like this little side lot here. Um, and then there's a big parking garage over here and it almost wraps around. Anyways, uh, but uh lots of great stuff. You know, this place doesn't get hit like uh a lot of stores in San Francisco do, mostly because uh there's a heavy police presence. I've seen numerous uh uh San Jose Police Cars. Uh, I see security at every door. The big stores like Prada and and stuff, um, there's a line to go inside and there's security there at the door. Um, so they're limiting who can come in and go out. You're gonna have to bum rush the place and uh hope that you get through. If you're trying to do a big smash and grab or something. Um, which is common. I mean, the Apple Store. Um, that's one of the few places that I think that they they might have a, a security risk. Because it's outward facing and it goes into the mall. Uh, but uh none of these places really seem to care about theft. But on the other hand, uh they've got like, you know, your typical mall stuff, lots of stores. This place is pretty high end, high end fashion, um, you know, uh. But it's busy. There's a lot of people, oh, you know, coming in and out all day. Um, the food court is pretty decent, you know, a lot of name brand stuff, kinda more on the higher end. Um, then what, you know, there's no Sabaro's here. Um, there's a Jamba D and a Chipotle. Yeah, but uh, you know, it's. It's, it's, it feels a little bit more high end, uh at least in the food selection. There's about eight different uh boba tea places throughout the mall. There's some fancy donuts and, you know, uh. I think they have a, what do you call it? Um. Not spaghetti factory, cheesecake factory, you know, so that means high end. Yeah, um, I've been working here for about six years, uh doing the same, same job. Uh, I'm, I'm an ad, ad auditor uh for Chanel. I I don't look like it. I'm a jeans and hoodie guy, but uh one of my clients. Uh, is Chanel. Uh, I make sure that their advertisements are running in place and. Uh, where they're supposed to be, they're not all messed up, they're not next to the bathroom or uh. When I do these ads on, on, on the outside, like, you know, they're not on a, next to a porno store or, you know, the, the strip joint or the liquor store. It's all about location and branding and everything, but uh, you know, so I come here and I do this. Uh, a couple of times a month and uh. It's interesting stuff, but uh it's also boring as shit. Anyway, they come here all the time. Um, and like, it's like they like built like another half to the mall. Uh, they have your typical Macy's and Nordstrom's. Uh, I think they have a JCPenney. This place is huge. It's really big. Uh, and they expanded it now. There's like this three story Italian eatery place, wine and cheese and bread and you name it. And I think there's a restaurant on the top. Um, there's like a steakhouse and uh Chinese food. There's a movie theater. They're about to uh open a bowling alley. What is it? Bolero, I think is what it is, something like that. Um. Big shopping, uh, uh, Parker Grove. Uh, yeah, I mean, and then this isn't even Santana Row. You go over there, that's a whole other experience. That's an outdoor shopping center, a lot of food. Um, it's like, uh, there's a, there's a hotel in the middle of it. Uh, it's all really nice and well done, but San Jose has been doing some interesting things. And I don't think they get a lot of credit for it, you know, um. They did some stuff like putting their homeless people to work. Um, which a lot of people were like, hey, that's wrong. I'm, I'm like, why is that wrong? Um, and you saw this city clean up a lot, you know, I don't see the, you know, as much graffiti. It's, it exists. You go in certain parts of San Jose and you know, it's. It's the working class people and, you know, these aren't the big tech guys that uh you're used to seeing. Um, or what you think of for Silicon Valley. I mean, this area is super wealthy. I mean, super wealthy, some of the like wealthiest people in the world. I mean, not far from here is Atherton where, you know, you have a Facebook guy. Um, I can't remember his name. I'm terrible with names. Uh, you know, Steph Curry's in Atherton now. Uh, you know, all those, all those big tech guys are at. Fat houses, huge houses. Um, but uh, if you go downtown in San Jose, like their theater district is actually. Really kinda happening now. I've, I've gone to a couple concerts down there. I've been to a few comedy shows. Um, uh, it's relatively close to SAP Center, SAP Center, whatever you call it. Um, it's a lot of bars and restaurants and that sort of nightlife stuff is all happening right there. The sofa district, is that what it's called? I I don't know what it is. Uh, I'm, I'm not all up on my, my neighborhoods. Uh, it's, it's like, they all change anyways. So, once I figure them out, it's done, uh, something different, you know, uh. Like I had San Francisco all figured out and now I'm like, I don't know what anything is and now they did it to Oakland. So, um, yeah, I guess that's just how the times change. Uh, but I'm trying to get to this other side of the mall. Um, because that's where all the cool stuff is. But uh, yeah, this whole area is really well done. I mean, uh, the Winchester Mystery House is just a couple of blocks away. Um. But if, if you go to the other side, you know, again, it's working class folks. Just doing regular working class people's stuff, building houses, fixing cabinets, fixing cars. You know, blue collar stuff. Um, and you need that. But what I was getting to, the whole point of, is you need economic development. Can't not have it. You can't just sit there and go, well, where's all the jobs? What are we supposed to do? Uh, we, we need to give all these people money or we need to give all these people free housing or low income housing and stuff. How are we giving people jobs? They can afford stuff. They don't have to be on food stamps and they don't have to be uh, you know, re, getting some sort of benefits or such and whatever it is that it, you know. Yeah, I probably sound like a big Republican asshole right now, but um. I, I, I really do believe that giving people opportunity is. Far more important than giving them a hand up in, in the sense of giving them, you know, uh, food or shelter. Saying, hey, here's a way that you can not only have food and shelter, you can have nice food and shelter beyond what you normally would have in this circumstance. You know, one of the things I think places like Oakland and any city should do is uh encourage entrepreneurial. Uh, endeavors, just like, hey, you have this idea. Okay, how do we make it happen? Like, what do you wanna call it? Uh, sort of like, um. Incubator type spaces, but not necessarily tech and R and D and that sort of stuff. But, like, what about a mall that, uh, just like a mall type space? That has uh the ability, man, it's getting. Uh, a mall type space that allows you to, you know, um. Do whatever that thing is that you wanna do, um, whether you wanna bake sandals or uh get drunk and paint. Um, whatever it is, and let the market decide. But the, the, the problem is, is there isn't letting markets decide. The market decided before you ever started because the space for a small retail store. You know, is many thousands of dollars per square foot. Uh, you've been priced out before you ever started. You know, that's why right now you're seeing a lot of these little uh, uh, like people running like taco stands in, in the, in their yard. Um, you know, they're uh, these home, they're, they call them home kitchens. They really started popping up during COVID. Um, and then they were given special um exemptions by the health department. So that they can actually uh make food and stuff. You're not supposed to be able to do this stuff in your house. Uh, you know, it's, it's, it's technically illegal to uh. Prepare foods, even, even um if you intend to take them out on a food truck or something like that, you can't use your house kitchen. Uh, you can't even operate, you can't even put stuff in your freezer. Um, this is, it's just the way it works. Anyway, so they made these special exemptions, which I think is fantastic because, again, they're giving these people an opportunity to, to try something out on their own. And uh not hamstring them with extra fees and so on, you know, it's like. Why would you say, hey, everybody, Bart's a good example. Hey, everybody, we would love for you to ride Bart and then you make it, you know, eight dollars to go two miles. Why would you say, hey, everybody, Bart's a good example. Hey, everybody, we would love for you to ride Bart and then you make it, you know, eight dollars to go two miles. You're like, I'll, I'll walk. Uh, fucking Uber's cheaper sometimes. Um, why? You know, uh, I don't think we, we think of stuff uh in the right context and uh and smartly. Um, and again, that's, that's a thing that was open. What did he call three weeks ago? And he, is any calls a lot of things? Maybe one of these jiggly things happened or not. I'm hoping, uh, you know, we can, uh, sorry. Vegas mer- seven two five. Hey, what, what was the thing that, that, that Zenny called? I was just waiting, but uh, anyways, yeah, but look at this. They got a Bloomingdale's. It's fancy. This is a pretty fancy place, you know, uh. Half the cars in here are like Teslas and BMWs. But uh, anyways, stuff like this needs to happen in places. See, it doesn't have to be high-end stuff. You know, again, you know, some sort of uh drive to at least have money coming in and out. I mean. Money doesn't come in and out just because you go to check with people, you know, um. Everything from universal basic income and and so on. Yeah, it helps. Put some roof over your head and food in your belly, but that's basic. It's that extra spending that really makes the difference, you know, can you buy a car? Can you uh join the gym? Can you uh. Go out to the movies? Can you go out to dinner at a restaurant? These, these are really those things that, that really start to, that, that uh, that spending money that, that really generates. That little extra bit, you know, those luxuries. And people don't have money for luxury, you know, um. It's another thing that we don't really, we, we kinda wanna ignore unless you're an economist about uh. You know, we're, we're on the brink of, you know, major financial crisis worldwide. You know, the dollar is losing its power. Um, there's shortages on food. Um, there's a lot happening and, you know, we're all living in our excess. Uh, but uh. Anyways, I'm dragging this way too far and off subject. Uh, again, tomorrow, uh. Governor Lombardo has. Called a special session and the. Target of that special session is the uh ballpark financing package that they. Would like to get pushed through and again, um, I feel like two things are inevitable. Either they keep saying no. And if they keep saying no, they, they, they cram it through, they rewrite it, they do something else. And then uh, they keep going until they run out of time and they have no other choice but to come back to Oakland. And hopefully make a deal here. Um, and I don't know how, what that looks like. I don't know if Oakland's capable. Um, and then uh, the other one is they just say yes and it's a wrap. Um, but something's gotta give and uh. These next twenty-four hours will be uh excruciating. Um, we got to breathe, breathe a sigh of relief last night and now here we are again, heavy breathing. We're all sweating. Anyways, guys, uh, I'm gonna get going here. I'm gonna finish my, uh, finish work here and I get my butt back home. Forty-five minute drive back, so uh, you guys have a great night. Uh, let's go Oakland.